Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Audit Committee meeting of Monday, December 6, 2021, to order. First item of business is to approve the minutes. I look for a motion from one of the committee members.
So move Jensen.
Second. Night sir.
Then moved and seconded. Jensen and Night sir. Any discussion? Anything done? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. That motion is carried. We'll move on to our next item, reports and updates. We have an update from the external audit of the city's 2021 financial statements by ID Bailey. I'd just like to say that Brian Stavanger from ID Bailey is also on the phone.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us on this chilly Monday morning, or Monday afternoon, I guess it is. Brian, as you said, is on the phone, and he was lucky enough to take all the snow for us. He's up in our Fargo office. So I'm Joy Feige. I'm in the Sioux Falls ID Bailey office. So I am going to turn it over to Brian, and he is going to walk through the proposed audit approach with you. So thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Another sound check, just to make sure that you can hear me loud and clear.
Awesome. You're doing great.
Okay, wonderful. Now, I don't see the presentation on my screen, but I'm assuming it's displayed for all the committee members to see.
Correct.
Okay, so starting with the cover page, and then we've just got a few slides to go through on our proposed audit approach for 2021, which is just about done. So slide number two is the table of contents and lays out really our goal for today, which is to describe to you our service team for the external audit. The, there, now I can see it, wonderful. The audit objectives, the audit approach, our approach when it comes to risk assessment and determining what areas of the financial statements we are going to spend more of our time on during the external audit, and then any recent or new professional standards. Next slide, we'll then begin going through the different agenda or table of contents. Our service team, and this service team, we're proud to say, is very consistent compared to last year. We believe it is very important to maintain, as best we can, a consistent audit team. There at times are rotations because of turnover and other reasons, but for the most part, we've been able to maintain a very similar service team. So myself, serving as the engagement partner, I'm really leading from the technical side of things to ensure that the audit is done appropriately from our standpoint, and we're meeting all the different standards, which we'll go through in a little bit. And then Joy, as mentioned, is there as your communication partner, your local partner for easy access, easy communication, and she does a great job staying in touch with various individuals and departments within the city. Then we have, from a management perspective, both Courtney Richmond and John Hagan from Fargo, returning members of the audit team. And then we have several other staff members, which will be a combination utilizing staff from both our Sioux Falls and Fargo offices to round out the service team. So I'll pause there before moving on to see if there are any questions or added comments from anyone there in person in attendance. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Next slide are the objectives of the audit. And this, like many of the other slides, really haven't changed, and I'll be sure to point out any significant changes from previous years, but there really hasn't been any significant changes here from what is the objective of our audit. On the very first bullet point there, there really are three different standards that we follow every year. The very first one is generally accepted auditing standards. Really, any time that ID Bailey is engaged to perform an audit of any entity, be it a gas station, a manufacturing company, a construction company, or a local government, we at a minimum have to follow these generally accepted auditing standards. We add another layer, or second layer, when we're auditing local governments, called Government Auditing Standards. That's really more compliance and control-driven, to make sure that any local, or probably more importantly, state regulations are being followed, and that you're having, you have or are putting, put in place adequate internal controls. And then there's a third one that we also follow, which is Title II of the U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, or commonly referred to as CFR. That is really over your federal funds, all the federal funding that you receive and expend throughout the year. There's another kind of separate standards or additional standards that we have to follow in regards to compliance of those federal funds. When we are doing the audit, we are obtaining reasonable but not absolute assurance. So sometimes there's a perception that we are providing absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and that is simply not accurate. We're looking to obtain reasonable assurance. And that really boils down to, you know, there's not an expectation from anyone that we are looking at 100% of the transactions for all 12 months out of the year. That's just not reasonable. So we are looking at sampling, we are looking at based on risk assessment, spending a lot of time in the areas that are more higher risk. We're obtaining reasonable, not absolute assurance during this audit. And then the very last part here, our procedures are going to include looking at, on a test basis, different evidence to support amounts within your financial statements and disclosures within ultimately your annual comprehensive financial report. The significant document that you receive is produced with or by the finance department, and you'll receive that at the conclusion of the audit. So we're examining everything within there on a test basis. We have a lot of discussions with management, but we're also obtaining outside evidence and support. We're also assessing the quality of the accounting principles and significant estimates that are built in that full financial report. So really, there are four significant areas that are estimates. Those are laid out on the very bottom of this slide. You can see a lot of different acronyms there, but incurred but not reported, other post-employment benefits, the landfill closure and post-closure costs, and then pension assets and/or liabilities. In all four of those different areas, the city is relying on some outside assistance, be it actuaries or other professional firms, to help with those estimates, because they are significant, and because in some instances, the governmental accounting standards require that an outside third party, other than just ID Bailey, assist with that. So we incorporate all of that within our audit procedures, ultimately to be able to provide you reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free of material misstatements. So I'll pause there. That's a lot to take in on one slide. I'll pause there to see if there's any questions from anyone in attendance.
I see no questions.
Okay, next slide, and we'll spend a few slides here on the audit approach. The audit approach, from a timeline standpoint, really hasn't changed from previous years. What has changed, and it really started last year with the, and we'll get into this on the third slide of the audit approach. That's really what has changed, is the way that we interact with city staff. But from a timing standpoint, we begin planning in November, continuing to December. We consider any changes to the city and its environment, and I would say most importantly, in 2021, is the COVID-19 impact, really from a federal grant standpoint. Last year, when we were going through and planning for the 2020 audit, and we were looking at what was the impact of COVID-19 on sales tax collections, what was the impact on potentially receivables, and in particular, utility receivables. Were homeowners and businesses struggling to pay their bills? So that was really a lot of what we talked about in fiscal year 20. For fiscal year 21, and this is mainly because we have been in touch with the finance department throughout the year, understanding that operations are much more normal, back to normal for 2021. So really, it's understanding what federal grants were received and expended. Those were really the big changes that we're making sure that we understand. But also, as a refresher, we want to make sure, have there been any changes to internal controls? We're going to spend time discussing with internal audit, what is it that they did during 2021, and how does that potentially impact our external audit? We'll also perform inquiries related to fraud. That is required. That was required beginning, I would say, 10 to 15 years ago. We have to spend time with members of the Audit Committee, internal audit, finance department, and then other departments, just inquiring about fraud risks, where people potentially see those risks, and making sure that we're understanding if there are any risks, that we're looking at those. And then during the planning phase, spending a lot of time talking about any potential accounting changes. As I mentioned just a little bit ago, we do stay in touch with the finance department throughout the year. So a lot of this, while it says November and December during planning, we are doing a lot of this throughout the year, just making sure we're staying in touch and staying aware of what's going on. We then will complete interim testing in December and January, and actually, next week is what we have dedicated to completing a lot of the interim testing. So we'll just confirm the timing and expectations with the finance department. We'll perform our fraud and risk assessment. We'll take a review of internal controls, an understanding of if anything has changed, or if everything is fairly consistent with previous years, discuss any new and significant transactions, and then start to audit those transactions. We'll start to gather data so that we can make our selections for sampling for year end. And then hopefully, the goal that has been in place really the last few years is to get going on that Title II, or really the federal audit. If we can get a head start on that, that usually helps out all of us. So right now, the federal programs that I would say potentially could be tested, we've got it really drawn down to four. It probably won't be all four, but it's going to be a combination, probably two to three of these programs amongst CDBG, transit, healthcare, or I'm sorry, health center, and then some of the COVID-19 funds. Just based on what's been provided to us so far, it's probably a combination of those four. Like I said, two to three of them. In 2020, we tested FEMA and the coronavirus relief funds. In 2021, again, a combination of two to three of those four listed. We'll continue to work with the finance department to understand the dollar amounts, what was expended, and then we'll make those selections and get going next week. I'll pause there. Just briefly, we still got a few more slides on the audit approach, but I want to make sure if there's any questions that you have the opportunity to ask those.
Yes, we have questions.
Say, Brian, this is Dean Buckner. Just curious, do you foresee any significant changes to the city's financials due to accounting changes that become effective for 2021 versus prior years?
Nothing significant. It will be likely, as long as nothing changes, for 2022. But for 2021, there are a few changes, and I'll go through those in a slide in a little bit, but nothing significant that would have any sort of significant impact on the 2021 audit and/or financial statements.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
I see none.
Okay, next slide, second of the third slide, three slides for the audit approach. And as I mentioned before, really no change in this timeline. We'll perform a lot of our year-end testing in January, February, and March. We've got the last weeks in January and February dedicated specifically to this audit, but in between those, we'll probably continue to perform some of the testing. It is a risk-based approach, making sure that we spend more time in the, what we've identified as the higher-risk areas. We'll test account balances. We'll test the unique transactions, those estimates that I had mentioned a few slides ago. We'll make sure we review and test those. And then ultimately, the financial statements, which are prepared by the finance department, we will review those financial statements and just make sure they are accurate and have all the required disclosures. And our goal for reporting is to issue the audit by the last week of March. Essentially, we don't want to roll into April. Our goal every year is to make sure we finalize it sometime in March, and we usually target that last week of March. And then we'll meet with the Audit Committee shortly thereafter. We usually start coordinating that late February, early March, getting together, just making sure that things are going along as planned, and then we'll coordinate that. Sometimes it's the last week in March, sometimes it rolls into April, but we should be finalized in March and then meet with you shortly thereafter. So I'll pause there one more time, just to make sure if there's any questions, you have an opportunity to ask those on the timeline.
No questions.
I got, I got one more.
Oh, yes, there we go.
Dean Buckner, again, Brian. Say, I shouldn't know this, but looking back at the grants, CDBG, can somebody help me to know what that means? Community Development Block Grant. Okay, thank you.
All right, continue, please.
Okay, let's advance to the next slide. Still audit approach, there it is. So we actually met with, Joy and I met with several individuals of the finance department in June, really to do kind of a recap, a debrief of the 2020 audit, just talk about what's working. You know, in 2020, we were almost fully remote. We had a little bit of onsite work, but almost fully remote, and that actually went really well. So it was talking about, you know, making sure that the city staff had the same impression that it went well, and just tried to get some notes in place as to what we're going to do for 2021 and going forward. We met again last week virtually, to just kind of refresh that conversation. But we likely are going to have a continued hybrid approach with, I would say, the majority of the testing and the audit work being done remotely. We do have secure access to Munis, which is the city's accounting software. We already have access to that. We checked that last week, and so we're good to go there. And that is secure from both the city side and the ID Bailey side. We're also utilizing ID Bailey's secure online portal to exchange confidential information, to make sure that that's secure and restricted to use by only the city and ID Bailey. And we likely will have minimal audit staff onsite. We do have an opportunity, and we do have some ideas that we've talked about with the city where it might make sense to have audit staff onsite. But we can, we can accomplish a lot of it through a remote environment. And through the last year to 18 months between the city and ID Bailey, we've become very comfortable that we're confident we can continue that. We do have a communication plan in place as well, just to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. Of course, when we're onsite, it's much more easy to pop in and say hi, and say, how are things going? Do we have everything we need from the city? Is there anything else that they need to provide? So we do have a communication plan in place, which is just daily check-ins, email plans. We don't want to overwhelm anyone with email, but we really just continue to fine-tune that audit approach. We're very comfortable with where that sits. From an ongoing communication standpoint throughout the year, I think I mentioned this probably when we met in March of 2021 to go through the results of the 2020 audit, we actually thought, from both the city's standpoint and the auditor's standpoint, that communication had actually improved. We were kind of forced to communicate much more frequently and to be much more clear. And so we have continued that throughout the year. We stay in touch more frequently, take advantage of the virtual opportunities to get together, and that was wonderful. But also throughout the year, we've got a lot of online publications, which we call our insights. Those are GASBIE Updates. GASBIE is the Governmental Accounting Standard Board. They issue, and you'll see in a few slides, there's generally two to three new accounting standards that are applicable each year. So we make sure to stay in touch with our clients, and specifically with city staff with that. Any federal audit changes, COVID-19 impact, CARES Act, American Rescue Plan, we accomplish a lot of that through online publications, webinars. We make sure to stay in touch throughout the year. We also have access to specialists. We've got some very, very good people within ID Bailey, and we do provide technical assistance, just interpreting those new accounting rules, answer questions when it comes to CARES Act or American Rescue Plan. There's a lot of, a lot of confusion that is in play with a lot of those federal funds, and we just make sure that we stay in touch with the city, and then if there are questions, that we can, we can get them in touch with some of our specialists. Okay, so a few more slides, just on risk assessment and new standards, before we move on, though, to those. I want to make sure to pause again to see if there's any final questions on our audit approach.
Final questions? I see no more questions.
Okay, let's move on to the next slide, the risk assessment. This is just a reminder, because this really hasn't changed in many, many years. But there's really two risks that we look at, the inherent risk and the fraud risk. The inherent risk is really before any consideration of internal controls, just what is there inherently that is risky about a certain financial statement area. So we're constantly assessing that inherent risk, and then we're also assessing fraud risk. And fraud risk, I would say, you know, changes a little bit more than inherent risk normally, just intentional misrepresentation or alteration. You know, things change. We have to take into consideration individuals in place that have access or responsibility of the financial statements. Is there any reason that something would have changed with those individuals tasked with those responsibilities? We have to look at the types of transactions, the frequency of transactions. Is there any other opportunities for additional fraud risk? So we're always analyzing these two areas, and then we tailor our procedures accordingly on a year-to-year basis. I'll pause there again. We've just got one more slide on new standards. Just make sure there's any questions on risk assessment, that we're able to answer those or address those.
I see no questions.
Okay, last slide of substance, recent or new professional standards. So this goes back to, Dean had a question on anything effective for 2021, and my response was, yes, there are a couple new standards effective, but really minimal impact on the audit, on the accounting, on the process itself. First one, GASBIE, which stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That board puts out all new standards. Number 89 is accounting for interest costs before the end of a construction period. So really, previously, any interest expense during construction was capitalized as a part of the project, and was considered a project cost, and then was depreciated. That is no longer going to take place. Any interest costs during construction will now just be expensed as opposed to capitalized. Really minimal insignificant impact on any of the financial statements of the city. Second one there is just a pretty simple one, renaming the annual report. It used to be called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Those first two words are flip-flops, now the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The prior acronym, it was found, GASBIE was made aware that it was actually a racial slur. C-A-F-R, when said out loud, was actually a racial slur in some parts of the world. So that was a quick change, just to make sure that that was not being done anymore. So now it's called the ACFR, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That is extremely minimal impact, other than just changing and rewording the annual report. Next year, in 2022, finally, the GASBIE number 87 on leases is going to be implemented. This was actually supposed to be effective in 2020. The pandemic caused another delay of that, but in 2022, it looks like a full go. So really, any lease that is entered into will be put on the balance sheet. It will be an asset and a liability. We continue to work with the finance department on them tracking all of their leases, and then ultimately implementing that. That'll be effective January 1 of 2022. You'll see that impact next year. Also, another change in 2022 is GASBIE 91 and conduit debt obligations. So when the city issues debt on behalf of another organization, even though the ultimate responsibility of repaying the debt is on that other organization, there are disclosure requirements within your annual comprehensive financial report. Just provides some clarification and establishes, hopefully, a little bit more clarity on when and when that doesn't apply. So not a significant impact anticipated, but GASBIE 87, that is anticipating to have a fairly significant impact. And then the following year, 2023, GASBIE 96, which is going to be very similar to the lease standard, that will ensure that any subscription-based IT arrangements, things like annual licensing fees for Windows or Microsoft Office, will also be recorded as both an asset and a liability on the financial statements of the city. So in the next couple of years, following this current audit, there will be some changes that will have an impact, and we'll make sure to spend a lot of time, especially post-audit, walking through those impacts with the Audit Committee. That is the last, as I mentioned, of the, any slide of substance. There's one more slide to allow for final questions, so make sure to pause and provide that opportunity for the committee.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board at this time? I don't see any, but I would like to follow up one time. Infected 123122, you talked about number 91, the conduit debt obligations. Could you, this is, I don't believe the city does a lot of that, if we do at all. Could you expand on that just a little bit for me, please?
Yeah, and there is. I know as of 2019, and I think they were still in effect, as of 2020, two health facility revenue bonds that were issued that had a balance of roughly $50 million. The city is not obligated for those, but because of the revenue bond piece of it, the city was required to be a part of those issuances. So those, again, are just disclosed. There is no liability within the city's financial statements, but the city is involved in the issuance of those bonds. Does that ring a bell at all, or is there anyone else there that could shed some light on maybe the last time that that occurred?
Counselor Night, sir.
I don't remember exactly what it was for, but at least once in my term, we have made it, we did do a bond issuance. It was on behalf of some sort of third party, and the law required or allowed that city, it had to be some sort of unit of government, but there's no financial, we're not liable for any of it, but we had to be the issuer, and our bond counsel walked us through it, and we approved it. I think it was maybe between 2016 to 18, somewhere in there. We've done it at least once. It was a very unique thing, but we've done it.
Thank you.
That's it. It was for Dal Rummel Village, and I think it had to do something with their health care organization, and they were able to get, I don't remember if, some favorable treatment or something, if we were the issuer for their, was it an expansion, maybe? Yeah, of their facility.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clearing it up. Any other questions? I see no other questions, so thank you for your report. I hope you have a good time in Fargo with all that snow, because you can keep it up there for a little while longer, at least another couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next report, the annual risk assessment.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.
Go ahead. Shawna Nelson, Internal Audit Manager. I wanted to take the time to go through how the risk assessment program has changed from this year to previous years. As we talked about last meeting, we implemented a new software called Audit Board, and with that, it helped with our risk assessment. This, I'll go through the timeline and different processes that we went through this year that was automated, and how it really streamlined the process that we went through in previous years. So like, like I was saying, the risk assessment, what we were doing it for is to identify the risk, assess risks, and prioritize any of our risks for the city of Sioux Falls. Here, this slide identifies our audit plan development cycle. We start in September, looking at the audit universe, updating any of that information. We send out the annual risk assessment to key stakeholders. We send out the annual risk assessment to key stakeholders. They provide their feedback, then we have meetings with them to do follow-up of any questions we may have based on their answers. We estimate the internal audit resources we have and the time that we can give to the audit program, and then we draft our annual audit plan and propose that to you. The internal audit planning program consists of the annual risk assessment, which identifies the inherent risk, the residual risk, any current risk, and emerging risk coming. We did, annually, we start in September and usually provide the proposed plan to the Audit Committee in December. And then who do we, who do we do the risk assessment for? And that's the Audit Universe, which consists of all the city departments, any major business processes, and city contracts as well. This year, we were able to streamline it, use the software and through Audit Board. Whereas before, we would have a, an Excel sheet that would be passed back and forth through emails. It was really a long task. Then we'd have to go through each one of them, verify, did they turn it in? Didn't they, this really streamlined our process through Audit Board, because we were able to send out due dates, they click on it. Their, the department and their team are able to go through the assessment. Once they close it, we get a notification that they're finished. And this risk assessment helps in the creation of our annual audit plan. With these meetings, I'd like to point out that there were five emerging risks that were identified for citywide. The largest being maintaining the workforce, competitive wages, and employee retention. The second one was maintaining current infrastructure and operations while keeping up with the growth of the city. Cybersecurity, upcoming retirements, the aging workforce, and succession planning and knowledge transfers. And then supply chain issues and the ability to access necessary resources and supplies. I think everyone is familiar with COVID and what it's done with getting resources and supplies to departments. The next slide I'd like to talk about is how we identify the inherent risk and what drove these risks. We had the impact and the likelihood. The impacts to the departments were how the impact was, the impact to the public, their revenues, expenditures, their sensitivity of inventory, public health and safety, interest to outside parties, confidentiality of information, and their criticalness of service time. The likelihood where the department changes, management, employee turnover, information technology, complexity of their operations, the date of their last audit, cash handling, any unanticipated events, new processes, management override, and average transaction time. This slide identifies where on the heat map the 26 departments were that we, that we sent the risk assessment to. And the highest top four was the, excuse me, the police, fire, rescue, health, technology, water, parks, and recreation. From there, we wanted to analyze what controls were in place, so we wanted to look at what residual risks the departments had as well. And that's the risk that remains when the controls are accounted for. And the control drivers for this assessment were policy and procedures, status of training, IT systems and applications, the quality of their internal controls, and if they were regulated or had any compliance. After assessing the inherent risk and then adding their controls, this is where the heat map brought us to on where the controls were. And the top five after the residual risk was multimedia support, facilities management, affordable housing, finance, accounting, and utility billing. With that, we conducted and put together our proposed audit plan. And before we go into depth of that, I just wanted to know if you have any questions about the audit plan procedure before we go there, the risk assessment.
Questions? Okay, jump right in.
Okay. So before you have your proposed audit plan for the fiscal year 2022, can you put the view, change the view? Up at the top, the view? There you go, and do the full screen mode? There you go. So based on our risk assessment, we've identified these for assurance audits. Physical facility security, that's a citywide audit to determine if the city has effective physical security technology and controls to protect its employees' assets and information. The Gulf Management Agreement that lives with the Parks and Rec Department, that's compliance regulations for Agreement 17-01-02. The cash handling for both planning and development. Departments with utility billing with finance partnering. The vendor setup and maintenance file for finance. The bidding selection process for architectural engineering service. Services, that's citywide, and the engineering department. The reconciliation of cash and AR systems and Munis. There are several different decentralized AR systems that feed into the financial system of Munis. And the employee reimbursement audit that is non-travel. The consulting audits, we would like to, we're a part of already, is the Fraud Task Force. And then there's another one we want to add for this year is the construction process. That's a review of the project from conception to close to evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of the controls, the policy and the procedures. The analysis and the follow-up audits, obviously, we'll be doing another risk analysis next year at this time. And then any of the follow-up audits from, that were conducted previous years that we need to follow up on, for example, the Midco Aquatic Center, the travel P-card expenditures, the big tax, ASM Global Management, and the Ovation's Food Service Spectre contract. And the carryover audits currently that have been started, and that's going to be completed in fiscal year 2022, is the Pharmacy 340B and the damage billing, as well as ASM Global contract. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
This is Buckner, say, you know, I'm just, I can't help but think about how we can incorporate into our plan, maybe not the current year, but certainly our long-term plan, reviewing the controls that we have in place to protect the city against cyber attacks, which are becoming more and more frequent and can cost lots of money. And I just think that we need to have this as part of our stated goal. We need to figure out, in my opinion, how we can protect ourselves, what we need to do. And maybe that's bringing outside experts, likely, but I think we need to be considering that.
That's an excellent point, Dean. There's been a lot of discussions between internal audit finance, as well as the multimedia communication department. We, last year, there was an assessment done, and some of those reports would have to be disclosed in executive session. So these are conversations going on, and we have partnered with outside agencies for the cybersecurity, as well as looking at where our insurance is as well, for our coverage for the city.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Knight, sir.
Just a few points of clarification. Vendor setup and maintenance, I would assume that would include things such as the account. If somebody says, "I'd like to update the account," and I put a new, you know, ACH number in, things like that.
Yes, that's correct. What we'll look at on that one is the person who, whether or not they can set up a vendor, change their account information as well as paying it. We'll look at that, as well as if there's any duplicate vendors in there, and identify who can make the changes and where the controls are.
Okay. Employee, give us all an example of some, a few employee reimbursements that are non-travel. Like, would that be like buying a book or something?
That would be potentially meals outside of it, like business meals or luncheons. It could be PPE equipment. Several departments, because they're outside, have different boot allowances, different clothing allowances.
Going to a local conference, for example, in town, is that? Or like going to like a chamber dinner, for example, would that count? If like the department bought tickets for that, or?
No.
No?
No. Those should, what we'd look at is anyone who's getting any reimbursements to themselves and why they're getting it.
Okay.
For example, if you, or if, let's see.
You expended your own funds versus using a city card, and then you asked for reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay, interesting. And then construction project, is there a specific project that's been identified? Or are you going to select one and follow it in real time, or how is that going to work?
Yes, we are going to select one coming up, follow it real time, that project from beginning to end. We're hoping we can get one that starts within the same year. But what we might have to do is kind of get the different phases of the project and then follow it through as well.
So it could be just a road project, or?
Yes, we're looking at maybe one of the building projects that's coming up this next year, because usually they're done within the same year versus a road project that can take multiple years potentially.
Yeah, so you may not pick the 41st interchange?
We probably wouldn't, but we can definitely follow it, yes.
That'd be quite a monster to use, I suppose. And then as far as the IT, to Dean's point, we did, we did, the council did approve funding, and we did have an assessment done. But it'd be interesting to have, for some sort of discussion or to bring back to us potentially if there's maybe policy or some sort of, you know, obviously, there's certain things you don't talk, you can't talk about publicly, and executive session does protect, for example, like some of the vulnerabilities that may be found, that you can talk about that in an executive session, so that obviously you're not telling people how to attack you. But if there's some discussion about, so some of my customers where, you know, when I'm working in IT, they have standards in place, and they do, they periodically have outside scans done, you know? Or like we do scans at certain points and things like that. So like, do we have anything in place where we'll maybe do that annually or something like that? So, because risks are changing literally every day. A scan that passed yesterday suddenly might fail today because some new vulnerability was found. So doing that on a, basically, a recurring basis and kind of keeping on that would be a good thing to put in place, if it's not already. Just something maybe to, if you're talking about it, to maybe bring back if there's any sort of city plan in terms of doing it on a recurring basis, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? Does any of the other audit team members have any input they'd like to bring at this time? I'd hate to, hate to deny you the opportunity. Okay, thank you. We do need a motion to approve the audit plan.
So moved, Jensen.
I'll second. Thanks, sir.
Then moved and seconded. Who'll take a voice vote for this? All in favor of the audit plan, as submitted, say yes.
Yes.
All in place, say no. That passed. So we'll move on to the next. Now we have committee member remarks. Is there anybody that has any remarks? I do, I'd just like to say thank you for the hard work you guys have done and to keep everybody's nose clean, and it's always nice to double-check the work. I appreciate what you guys do. With that, public comment, seeing none? None, nobody in the room? This adjourned, this meeting.